Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting here Tuesday, April the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And I would declare that all councillors are present with councillor Tim Harding is attending virtually as he is out of the county on a conference. So we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. And is there any additions anyone would like to make to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll ask for an approval of the agenda. Move councillor Allen, second by councillor Sappington. All those in favor or against, please vote.
Yay.
Okay, motion carried with councillor Harding voting so unanimous. Is there any members of council would like to declare a conflict of interest at this time on anything that's coming up on the agenda? Councillor Hiltz.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you. I'm employed at King's Regional Rehab Centre and on the agenda, number five, financial services, the amendment to policy F I N dash zero five dash zero two six, tax exemption for nonprofit organizations.
So five C, you want to...
No, five B.
Oh, that's special counsel. That's the next meaning.
Okay, my apologies. Okay, thank you.
All right, so you can wait till then. All right. I'll declare you out of order. All right, all right, minutes of March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, twenty-five, Committee of the Whole. Did anyone see any errors or omissions in those minutes? No? Okay, I declare those approved. March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, Special Committee of the Whole. Did anyone see any irregularities there? No? Okay, I approve, I declare those minutes approved also. We'll move on to, that's the course we took on parliamentary procedure, right Everett and Christina? Yeah, we know what we're doing here. All right, we'll move on to business arising from the minutes, Committee of the Whole. Is there any business arising from the March eighteenth minutes? No? Okay, we will move on then to March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, Special Council meeting, budget meeting. Is there any business arising from those minutes? Okay, we'll move on to presentations. We had the pleasure of have a couple of presentations this morning, and we would ask that the presenters limit themselves maybe to fifteen to twenty minutes. And first up, we have Swim Nova Scotia, need for aquatic infrastructure, and Martin Laycock, the president, and Betty Elhawry, executive director presenting. I don't know if I pronounced that right or not, Betty, but hopefully I got it close. And so we'll put your mic on and welcome, and look forward to hearing your presentation.
Great, thank you Chair. Thank you, members of council. I'll just apologize. I was out of gust on Sunday, lost my voice, so just bear with me. As I, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank everyone today, and thank you, Mayor Corkham, for being at the double A meet at Wolfville back in March. It was a very exciting time, very loud, but I think you saw the energy and excitement that comes with the swim meets and the facilities that we have, especially in Wolfville. So just a little bit about Swim Nova Scotia. We are the governing body of, in Nova Scotia, represent about twenty-three hundred participants that age from sixteen to eighteen, in addition to two university programs at Acadia and Dalhousie, supporting nearly a hundred and twenty-five student athletes. We also have a vibrant masters community with about four hundred swimmers ages between eighteen and eighty-five, so it's never too late for folks to jump in the pool. I do want to point, as a father of two daughters myself, swimming is a predominantly female-driven sport, with about sixty-four percent of our participants identifying as female. And they join sport for camaraderie, sportsmanship, and personal growth opportunities. Beyond competition, our athletes are known for strong academic achievements, even to the extent we have probably the first in Canada award where we identify students who have ninety-plus average, and they make a certain time standard for a meet, and we had about fifteen representatives this year alone. So that sort of sport and academic achievement, we like to recognize. And also, community engagement, making access to safe, functional aquatic facilities, critical for both their academic and personal development. We fall under Swim Canada, which is the umbrella organization. We have fourteen swim clubs, including the Wolfville Tritons. Also, how many summer swim teams do we have?
Fourteen summer.
Fourteen summer, so we have quite a number. So we divide into year-round and summer swimming program, so lots of people involved. However, of course, are Wolfville Tritons, which have about a hundred and thirty members, including swimmers of all ages, coaches and volunteers, and some of our Wolfville Tritons are here today. As you can see, our mission is to govern, support, and advocate for the sport of swimming. So we continue to advocate for facilities across the province to ensure our community needs are met. We promote multi-use aquatic facilities that can be used to learn to swim programs, other aquatic sports, for community members of all ages and demographics, and as well competitive swimming needs. So just a very high level over here, I'm not going to sit on this slide for too long, but essentially what this shows you is the status of pools just across the country. I think we had our heyday for swimming pools in the sixties, when pretty much when all of them were built across the country, and they range from twenty-five meters all the way to fifty meters, which is what you would see at the Olympics, or, you know, if the Olympics in L.A., they're gonna have it in SoFi Stadium, so it'll be a fifty-meter pool, and very exciting. So but the point of this slide is to show the aging infrastructure of pools just across, across the country, and the need for the investment, not just here in Kings County, but across Nova Scotia and the rest of the country. So why invest in pools? So community impact, or community social benefits. Pools bring people together to foster connections. They offer a safe place for families, seniors, youth, for recreation, fitness, and learning. They support after-school programs, employment and volunteer opportunities. There's obviously health benefits. You know, it's a low-impact sport, so it also helps with mental health, reducing stress, loneliness, and boosting mood. And physically, it's a low-impact, full-body workout for all ages, improving heart health, strength, and sleep. Swimming is a life skill. This is really important, I think. Swimming saves over four hundred Canadians, sorry, four hundred Canadians dry, die annually from drowning, many in unsupervised settings. Newcomers generally are at greater risk for this. They don't have access, they don't train for swimming. There are, and just to give you some perspective, there are thirteen monitored lakes within Kings County alone, and without some type of training and learning how to swim, that this problem sort of gets exacerbated. Sport specifics benefit, so there's pools have athlete developments in swimming and other aquatic sports. Hosting events like swim meets bring tourism, fills hotels, and boosts the local economy. We saw that in March with, in Wolfville. And like I said, Wolfville alone hosts five swim meets a year, and try and get a hotel during that time. It's next to impossible, and there's major economic impact. And then access and participation, proximity matters. Access to pool increases participation in both aquatic and other sports. And also, investing in pools makes more sports accessible. The slide I like, because it's rethinking. Generally, you think of pools as cost centers, which generally, for the most part, they are, but I think we need to move away from the nineteen-sixties pools and think about what we can invest in and sort of energy efficiency. So we move from pools losing money to pools making money. So it's about thinking, how do we make them more efficient, whether it be through LED lights, or just heating and filtration systems, and investing in the equipment to reduce, reduce the energy cost. Pool business plan, and again, I think it's thinking through that. So we need to think of entrepreneurial, proactive revenue focus, so whether it's more seniors programs, more, more community programs, getting people in there and using the facility more, gaining those skills. I think that becomes more of a revenue generator. Award-winning buildings with pools, we're gonna move to functional buildings with award-winning pools. So it's that shift in mindset, as we have a, you guys have a beautiful building here, certainly better than what I'm used to. But this is, but I think the difference is we can focus on the facility, the thing that people are using, rather than the thing that's surrounding it. And I think that's an important access. And swimming, for some people, to aquatic learning centers for all. This is really important, quite frankly. If you go to really most facilities across the province, they're not accessible, or the accessibility is really lacking, and that limits a lot of folks to be able to, quite frankly, do a sport that would probably help them out quite a bit. And I think that's a focus that we want to, for any new facility, or any facility in general, is really think about the accessibility for folks, so that we can be inclusive for all, all abilities and all, all demographics. So I'm not gonna go too much into the Murtha pools and whatnot, but there are different types of structures, excuse me. So costs have skyrocketed, but there are alternatives here. So Sprung Structures is a Canadian company that can build pre-tension fabric buildings out of aluminum and PVC membrane, carry fifty-year warranty on the structure and twenty-five years on the membrane. And then Murtha Pools is an Italian pool company, that they're a pretty eminent manufacturer of stainless steel pools, which are pretty cool, actually. And they've done competition pools, Paris Olympics, and they have a twenty-five-year warranty and fifteen-year warranty on the, for the PVC membrane. They're, they've built over a hundred facilities with two hundred tanks in Canada since nineteen ninety-nine. So this just gives you an idea of where they are across, so it's not just some fly-by-night company that's just randomly across the country. And then, sorry, we got a little Canada flag. We like our Canadian-built items, too. But they can be recreation complexes, like you see here. Again, there's still lanes for competitions, could be a mix of what you have, all the way to competition pools. So the Toronto Pan Am Pool, Windsor International Aquatic Training. So there is a variety of opportunities with just one, one manufacturer. And I think that goes to any type of business plan, and how best suits the community's needs overall. So I just want to give you two case study examples here. One is Idaho. Just to give you some context, this is a ten, ten-lane, fifty-meter tank, has also a six-lane, twenty-five-meter pool, so it has two pools. Has about seating for spectators, which if there's one thing I'm going to stress, that is important. Like, because as a parent at a Canada game center, out on the glass, watching, trying to watch my kids, see what's going on, doesn't work. You need the stands for folks to be able to watch what is going on, whether it's competitions, or whether it's just lifeguarding or water safety. It needs to be there. This was, excuse me, constructed a hundred percent in private funding. They had a seven, the total cost was about twenty-six million Canadian, or two hundred and seventy-five dollars per square foot. It was, they had a seven-million-dollar mortgage that was paid down over eight years in eighteen months, positive cash flow. It was built in thirteen months, and it opened in June twenty twenty-three. So it does exist. This isn't like a unicorn of an idea that, that, you know, the pools can, can make money. This one I like, too. This is town of Uxbridge. It's going to be built. It was approved. And it's a recreation center. It's eight lanes, twenty-five-meter pool, with a ten, ten-by-fifteen-meter tank, so it's a warm-up cooldown for swimmers. Has seating for a thousand spectators. Also has a pickleball court in the back, so that's a, you know, the up-and-coming sport for a lot of folks. And this one cost around sixteen million dollars, and two million for, for the courts. So the pool was fourteen million dollars. And the renderings were just approved in January, and they're planning to open this in March twenty twenty-seven. To give you context, Uxbridge is around twenty-one thousand people, so for, just for size-wise. And so this is what they thought was right for their community. And just in closing, this is about making a meaningful investment in our community, a functional, inclusive, and affordable aquatic facility that reflects Wolfville's values, or sorry, municipality of Kings' values, health, education, and accessibility for all. We're proposing a practical and efficient build, one that can serve all ages' abilities, and support local programs, and be delivered in a financially responsible and timely way. With strong collaboration, a focused plan, this facility can be here in reality sooner than later. Thank you for your time, your leadership, and your continued commitment into the community's wellbeing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any, councillors have any questions? Councillor Best?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What's the size of the Acadia pool now?
Sorry?
What's the size of the Acadia pool?
It's, it's a six-lane, twenty-five-meter pool, and has, like, it's almost at the end, it's like shaped like a T, so they're about, I'd say fifteen-meter, probably ten-meter, kind of cool, warm-up pools on the side.
Thank you. Next question, if I may, Mayor. So twenty-five meter would be efficient for Kings County?
So what I would say is, sure, yes, but what I would encourage you to do is, and again, I'm not comparing Kings County to Clayton Park in Halifax, but I'd go to Clayton Park, go to Canada Game Center, seven o'clock in the evening, and at the Canada Game Center, it's absolute pandemonium. Like, in fact, so instead of lengths, doing short favors, they actually do widths, to get more lanes, to fit more people. You can't, it's challenging to swim. And in fact, I don't think it's being out of turn, but they have a fifty-million, fifty-million-dollar plan to extend it, which, because they wanted, they want to put a fifty-meter pool in, but the bus terminal and all that fun stuff, but they ran out of space, is what it boils down to.
And you said earlier there was five meets a year at Acadia?
At Wolfville, yes.
At Wolfville, I mean?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Plus camps. So Swim Nova Scotia hosted provincial camps there, in addition to the five meets per year that we've sanctioned. And I know the local swim clubs also do in-house competitions during some of their practice times. So there was a big loss to the Swim Nova Scotia community without a facility in this part of the province.
If, one last question, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. I guess if this pool goes in Kings County, I guess it could go anywhere in Kings County, people would come to it.
Absolutely. And I strongly encourage to build bigger than what you have currently. Six-lane, twenty-five-meter, as Marty mentioned, twenty-five meters is great, but we need more. You build it, and people will come. The facility will get used, so bigger is better. Communities continue to grow. Our, our sport continues to grow. We've got a couple of summer swim teams as well in the community that access the pool. And that's just our sport alone. And I think if there was more water space available, it makes it more accessible for the community.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to the presenter. If I heard correctly, you said these pools are made of stainless steel liners? Is that correct?
They, they can be, yes.
Yeah. So geographically, where would the nearest one be to us located? You showed a map, but?
In Quebec.
Oh, Quebec.
Yep, there's none, none, none within Atlantic Canada. This, in St. John's, Newfoundland, they're hosting the Canada Summer Games. They're having a retrofit, and so that will be Murtha as well. It's not quite ready yet, but coming soon. So then Newfoundland, but currently Quebec.
And one more question, if you don't mind. You mentioned the new pools are profitable, can make money. What's the main difference that makes it profitable?
I think there's two, two areas. One is the use of the facility, so the business plan, making sure that you're working with the local community, filling some of the quiet time during the day by doing different activities, whether that's seniors' programs, or working with a local rehab center, or the hospital, trying to bring in new programming that way, that may not have existed. And then, second to that would be on the environmental side, making sure that it's environmentally efficient once it's built, and cost savings. One area, as Marty mentioned, a lot of our pools are aging. And one of the concerns, and as we've seen at the Acadia pool, is how the maintenance is done, and the forecasting of your maintenance, making sure that your pool operators understand the principles of the maintenance and the servicing that they're doing. And when there is staff turnover, that they also understand the principles, and they make sure that your pool is being maintained on a, on a schedule, and everybody understands why you are making these upgrades, and the importance of maintaining your facility, so it doesn't crumble.
Just a comment. Your presentation was very informative. Thank you.
Councillor Lutz?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you. Just two questions. Does Swim Nova Scotia run any programming out of the existing Waterville and, like Waterville indoor pool, and the Kentville outside pool?
Yes. So one of our summer clubs, the Kentville Marlins, utilizes the outdoor pool for their main training and competitions. We host one summer swim meet there each year, and we have held provincials there as well. They also have in-house competitions. They also use the Waterville facility for year-round training. So they use that for up to two hours per week between November and May. And between September and October, and May and June, they use it for a few hours per week until the outdoor pool opens in July.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. And, oh, I think that was basically it around, should, would a new facility, I guess, render those two facilities redundant, or like specifically, could they shift to solely community use? Because, you know, I think the Kentville one's being renovated now to increase accessibility. The Waterville pool needs some work in terms of accessibility, big time. So would it, do you think it would replace or complement the two existing facilities in this end of Kings County? I don't want to exclude Greenwood, but it's a different purpose.
That's a great question. Councillor Lutz, I think it would complement. Our programs continue to grow, and one area that our clubs find difficult in terms of their recruiting, they don't necessarily have a waiting list on the club, but they have difficulty in specific groups, because they have so many kids in one age group trying to train at the same time, and there's only so many lanes. So in order to, for our clubs to continue to grow, they need that space. And if there is access at both Waterville and the Kentville pool, and a new pool in this area, they will, the pool time will, will get used, and our clubs can continue to grow.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Councillor Sappington?
I would like to say that my own twin daughters enjoyed a spring swimming camp with the Tritons very much. And I, myself, when I go traveling with my children... And I myself, when I go traveling with my children, will look for hotels with a water slide just because yeah, that's how I keep my sanity. And so that alone is a draw for families. And with that in mind, I was wondering if you could give me a gauge of how many families we're talking about would be coming for swim meets, for each swim meet. So we can gauge how much of a population would be coming here from outside.
Yeah. So uh, the latest meet that we hosted there provincially was uh, the double A Winter Champs. And that one had 200 swimmers. Plus we had about 60 to 75 coaches and officials plus all of the swimmers' families. And with swimmers' families, they're bringing their parents, grandparents, siblings. Um, this was a three-day swim meet. So everybody, it started um, at 8:00 AM on Friday morning. So most people traveled in on Thursday evening and left uh, late Sunday night. So we had teams from Yarmouth all the way up to Cape Breton uh, that joined us. And we also had uh, two teams from PEI there as well. So it's, you know, significant community impact when we're hosting uh, provincial events.
Counselor Gates?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, could you just uh, give me that cost per square foot of one of the recent builds, if you might?
So the one in Idaho, uh, which was the 10-lane 50-meter pool was 275 per square foot. So that one was quite a big facility, 10-lane 50-meter. Plus it had the uh, warm-down uh, tank as well, which was, I think, an eight-lane 25-meter. Six-lane, sorry, 25-meter. Yeah. And the, the one that's being built right now in Oxbridge, I don't have the cost per square foot, but it's 14 million for the pool alone. And that was eight-lane 25-meter plus um, the 15-meter six-lane leisure pool. Um, so that can be doubled as a warm-up, warm-down pool and a teaching pool, leisure pool.
Thank you.
Counselor Lutz?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you. Um, one more follow-up. You talked about Canada Game Center in uh, Cole Harbour, no. Clayton Park, thank you. I always get them confused. Um, I have a similar, you know, I share similar experiences. Uh, we were there recently for a basketball tournament and there was no capacity in the pool. It was so busy that the kids couldn't go swimming uh, on a Saturday. Um, and it just seems like that places mayhem constantly. Every time I've been there, it's mayhem. Do you anticipate that some of the events that are held at the Canada Game Center could be attracted to this county because of how busy the Canada Game Center is?
We actually don't have um, any events at Canada Game Center. Uh, we've hosted um, summer events uh, in recent years. So last year we did have summer swimming provincials. That was the only um, major summer, ma- major event that we hosted there, um, and a master's meet. So uh, unfortunately, we don't have a year-round swim team that trains out of that facility because we can't get the training uh, time. Uh, they are limited to a master's swim team that trains at 5:00 in the morning uh, to fill that space. And a summer program uh, that's available in the summer months when they don't have their um, main programming going on. So unfortunately, as Marty said, that facility wasn't, wasn't built with the future in mind. And unfortunately, we can't, can't use that. But uh, we would definitely, you know, if there is a facility here, it, it will be used by Swim Nova Scotia, absolutely. And we hope to be able to host more events uh, like camps. Um, we've increased the, a number of our camps that we've been running across the province. And we tend to do those either in a 50-meter pool or in an eight-lane 25-meter pool. So, and we like to move around the province. So right now those are taking place in Greenwood and Truro. And we'd love to have more facilities with that ability.
Okay, and just one follow-up if I could, Mayor. Um, one of the, like, I, I hear of a lot of families going to that facility often from the valley, like for, whether it be for volleyball or track or swimming or whatever. It, do you think that the reason it's so busy is because it's a, it's, there's, there's lacking facilities elsewhere? Like, and maybe you're not, maybe that's too broad of a question to just ask you, but do you think, is there a, it's just, okay, so you, you should have sort of answered it, I guess, by saying they didn't plan with the future in mind. But it seems to me that I'm, I am always surprised to hear how many people are traveling there to partake in recreation and from this area. So I'm wondering if that's common, like in Bridgewater and in Truro, are people like always traveling to the city to having to be able to access, or in order to be able to access this type of facility?
So not necessarily to the Canada Game Center, but uh, Dowplex is one of two 50-meter pools. And at the national level, it, their priority is 50-meter racing. And that's how you qualify for national and beyond. So it's important to our organization to host um, competitions in 50-meter pools. So we have a lot of swim meets that take place at Dowplex. And so that tends to be, you know, the, the driving force uh, to, for people coming into the city would be to go to the meets at Dowplex.
And what condition is Dowplex in? That's my final question.
It's not great.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is my last question.
It is.
Perfect. You know more about swimming than I'll ever know in my life. If money was no object, what should Kings County build? And roughly what will it cost?
Well, uh, there's a great uh, facility being built in Burnaby, BC at a cost of 222 million. Uh, that's uh, off the ground right now. And that's a 10-lane 50-meter pool. Uh, traditional brick and mortar with um, a 10-lane 25-meter pool as well as a leisure pool with the slides and a splash pad.
Let's talk Nova Scotia.
Okay.
Please, you, you, you work for Nova Scotia. Let's think about Nova Scotia.
From our perspective, these case studies on, on Murtha pools are both excellent models for, for this community. Definitely the 10-lane 50-meter Murtha pool at 26 million Canadian. Very viable option for this community. It also has the teaching pool. And you know, if you want some pickleball courts in there, you can add them in uh, for $2 million.
Thank you. So we better look at $30 million. Thank you.
Counselor McPherson?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Through you. Thank you very much for your very informative presentation. I'm just kind of listening to some of the questions that are being posed by my colleagues. Uh, in my perspective, uh, aquatic facilities are required in every area because they're used for a whole bunch of different reasons. And one stream evidently is the competitive stream that we seem to talk about quite a bit this morning. But there's also a very second uh, stream that's very much important.
And what's your question, Counselor?
Coming to a question. And that's recreational stream. And the fact that there are swimming lessons and exercise and therapeutic, all kinds of things that happen. Uh, what I'm hearing in the questions is, it's a big expense. And therefore, you know, I, I think we're looking for assurances that if we were to jump in and go through this expense, there are assurances that the pool would be used. And my instinct is absolutely, but from a swimming in Nova Scotia perspective, you have pools across the province. You have a specific number of meets. Are you able to give assurances that in particular, a new facility built in Kings County would be an important part of your scheduling? And that we could rest assured in our fair share of meets which would create that economic boom that would be required to pay for the pool?
Yeah. I, I mean, absolutely. You know, we're, we're uh, you know, we entertain partnerships all the time. And there's, you know, a number of opportunities for us to work with. Um, whether it's a, you know, the facility itself or the municipality, whoever the operator is in terms of ensuring that we have access. Um, and that also there is equipment there. So you know, we venture into cost-sharing models uh, with new facilities in terms of some of that equipment that's specific to our needs. And with the assurances that we are able to host competitions there. Um, and we go through what we call a bidding process with our teams each year to determine who hosts, who hosts swim meets. Um, and part of that process, we do pre-assign some of, some of those meets. Um, so they don't go open to meets. And that's to ensure communities have that support um, from our organization. So that's something that we currently do and we would uh, certainly entertain that moving forward. Whether it was a 25-meter pool or a 50-meter pool.
Counselor Hiltz?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, great presentation, very informative. I appreciate it. Um, a couple of questions. Uh, you'd mentioned community, you know, having them involved, how important it is. Um, who generally operates these pools?
So in the traditional model, it'd be municipalities, tend to be uh, the, the aquatic operators, the, the pool operators. But um, in more recent years, we're seeing various partnerships um, with community groups. So in some cases, um, the provincial sport organization is the operator in partnership with um, the municipality and the community. So um, it's, it's a three-way split and the provincial organization kind of oversees um, what's happening at the pool and, and the access, just to ensure that there's equitable opportunities for everyone.
Okay, thanks. Uh, one last question if I may. Um, what's the lifeguard situation? I know through COVID, uh, I had firsthand experience that there was a shortage. Um, what's it look like now?
I'm not, I'm not 100% certain. Um, that's the Life saving society, but I do know, um, you know, I've, I've heard the same things that they are still trying to recruit new lifeguards and water safety instructors. Um, some of our clubs have partnerships with local facilities that once swimmers um, become, you know, 14, 15, 16, um, they would have a trade-off with that facility that they would become the lifeguards and the water safety instructors. Um, and that that facility would train those swimmers uh, to, to be the teachers uh, at no cost. Um, so there's some incentives there and that's partnerships with the local swim teams and the facility to ensure that they have the staff. So there are some great models out there.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you very much on behalf of council. And uh, sort of sum up, I, I, on a personal note, I had a or I have a stepson that was mentally and physically challenged. I went through the SMILE program. And I can't tell you what that did for that young man's confidence. Uh, so it's uh, it certainly uh, makes a huge difference. I want to definitely thank you for coming with a realistic and reasonable ask and not uh, the $225,000 pie in the sky that we definitely can't afford. And lastly, I, I want to assure you that this is a top priority of this council and that we're already, thanks to the previous council, three and a half, approximately three and a half years into it. And we're very close to making a decision on where and if and what. And uh, I think that's going to happen shortly. So again, thank you so much for your very informative uh, presentation. I know that uh, all of us thoroughly enjoyed it and, and certainly gained uh, some valuable information. And uh, appreciate you coming.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Council.
Okay. Uh, I would ask for a member of council to move receipt of the uh, presentation, please. Moved by Counselor Lutz, seconded by Counselor Bass. All those in favor uh, uh, please uh, or against, please vote.
Yay.
You don't have to leave. You can stay for the rest of the meeting. Something you said, Bobby? Motion carry. All right. In our next presentation, we're very pleased to have the Friends of the Kentville Ravine, uh, the Threat to the Hemlock Trees in Nova Scotia and uh, Dr. Tom Herman, Dr. Peter Hickleton and Ken Harrison presenting uh, uh, and welcome, gentlemen. I'm pleased to have you here.
I love this table. Good morning. Uh, thank you all. Uh, the three of us come here as uh, members of an informal advisory group to the town of Kentville uh, that advises the town on the uh, wellbeing and management of the Kentville Ravine, which is an old growth forest, uh, which many of you I'm sure are quite familiar with. Um, one of the few remaining old growth forests on the valley floor. We live in unprecedented times. In an age in which for the first time in our planet's four and a half billion-year history, one species has a greater impact than all the other biological and geological forces that have shaped this planet. If I could quote a now extinct, but uh, perhaps known to a few of you in the room, a uh, a famous Okefenokee possum named Pogo. Uh, we have met the enemy and they is us. How have we done this? Well, in part, by our ability to shrink the planet through globalization. The speed and distance at which we move information, money, culture and species across the planet has accelerated dramatically and continues to accelerate. We live on a much smaller planet now than we once did. Um, and this is manifest in so many ways. I don't need to describe those to you and that's not our purpose this morning. But there is one way that I would like to discuss, uh, which has had a, a major impact on us. Uh, and that's the ecological globalization that has come with moving species around the planet. So that we find ourselves encountering organisms here that did not evolve here, do not belong here, yet are here and are with us primarily because of our ability to move them from one place to another across the planet. So I'm here to talk about one species in particular that we have moved across the planet. And some of you are familiar with it. It's the hemlock woolly adelgid. This information is circulated. So I'm going to go through these slides. I won't speak to all the points on them. You have copies of the slide deck as well as some uh, additional information and a link to a very info, uh, uh, a very informative video that I highly recommend that you uh, take the time to look at. Um, so this is a beast that was introduced to North America about 75 years ago in Virginia. It is a small, the, a, a small organism with a large name, hemlock woolly adelgid. Um, adelgids are very much like aphids. So if you're familiar with aphids, very tiny insect, much, much smaller than a grain of rice, but with a enormous impact. Uh, this beast is spreading. It's uh, specific to eastern hemlock. It doesn't occur on any other trees here. Uh, and it uh, kills hemlock trees within four to 10 years. Uh, nearly with 100% lethality. There are very few trees spared. Uh, it was first reported in Yarmouth sometime in 2017, 2018. We think it might have arrived a year or two earlier. And it is spreading rapidly. And in fact, last year, we were on the cutting edge of the invasion. This year, we're no longer on the cutting edge. It has moved further east. So uh, yeah, the, the red dots on this map just show points that, uh, where it has been observed. Uh, the lack of points does not mean lack of adelgid. It just means the lack of uh, sampling. So uh, you can see that we are uh, fairly close to the, the eastern leading edge, but uh, but we are beginning to leave that edge behind. Uh, what does it do? Uh, why should we be concerned? Well, um, some of you are familiar with, most of you are familiar with hemlock. Uh, it is one of the foundational tree species in the Acadian forest. The Acadian forest is a unique forest in North America. The Acadian Forest is a unique forest in North America and, but it's not a particularly diverse one. So we probably have 10 common tree species, more than 10 species in total, but probably 10 that are common and, and a handful of those, a smaller group of those are foundational. And one of those foundational species is hemlock. I mean foundational by, in the way that trees have a disproportionate impact on the structure and function of the forest. And hemlock is certainly one of those foundational species. When it disappears, this is what it begins to look like. On this, on the image on the left is in Digby County. And when the trees die, they leave the skeleton behind and, and that's visible from the air is the, those gray, the gray ghosts in the left. And if you would zero in on those trees, get a little closer, as you can see on the right, those, when those trees die, and particularly along waterways where hemlock are particularly common, the environment changes dramatically. And everything beneath the trees die, dies as well because of course the lack of leaves on the trees changes the environment. Next slide. So here's the beast, it looks pretty innocuous. You can, if you want to see one of these, just go up to the picnic site at Kentville, at the research station, and walk towards the trail to the ravine and look up. And there's hemlocks there that are heavily infested right now with this little beast. It spends most of the winter as, as an adult in the, at the base of the leaflets, on the twigs, at the base of the leaflets, where it inserts its little sucking mouth parts and feeds. And then from April to September, it reproduces dramatically, they reproduce asexually. One individual insect can produce tens of thousands of offspring. There have been a number of efforts to control HWA, and I won't go into all of them, there's a longer list that's been circulated to you. The first big project was at Sporting Lake, which is a provincial protected, highly protected area. And there's also a project going on right now at Acedilisk on the south shore with, with the, which is a, run by Ulnuag, the Mi'kmaq Educational Center, and they're using Two Eyed Sing to manage HWA at that site using some very innovative approaches. There's a lot of work that's been done in southwest Nova through the Medway Forest Cooperative, and more recently at the Kentville Gorge, which is how Ken, Peter and I got involved this past summer, a group of volunteers, old people looking to get into good trouble, and members of the town of Kentville staff, and a number of other people treated trees, both with trunk injection and basil bark spray. Kegy Park is also in the middle of a major project to control this, try to control this pest. And they have an ongoing project. Next slide, please. There are a number of interesting alliances that grow out of this, these efforts. Ecology Action Center, Confederacy of Mainland Mi'kmaq, a group called Save Our Old Forests. There are some external resources available as well. We have advice from people in the US who have been dealing with this problem for a much longer time. There's a local regional working group called the HWA Regional Working Group, which consists of government, municipal, provincial, and federal NGOs, NGOs, private landowners, private woodland owners, who meet monthly to discuss new information, status of ongoing treatment projects, a status of infections, spread of infections, and so on. Next slide. In Kings County, there have been several initiatives. The, in 2022, the United Church Camp in Berwick, they decided that they were going to save those hemlocks. If you know that church camp, you will know those hemlocks, they are marvelous, right in the town of, of Berwick. And they injected and sprayed all of their hemlocks. Quite an undertaking, and they did it entirely with volunteers. So cost of chemicals and sweat equity. Last year, as I mentioned already, we treated trees in the Kentville Gorge. That project was a collaboration between the Rotary Clubs of Kings County Charitable Foundation, Mud Creek Rotary Club, Blomman and Naturalist Society, a number of private individuals and some academics as well. And we began the project to control HWA in the gorge park in the town. It was chosen as the first site to, to make this collaborative, take this collaborative approach in Kings County because it was entirely owned by the town, there were no land ownership issues and et cetera. So we treated about 60% of the trees last year and we will treat the remainder this What needs to be done? I, I, I think it's important to recognize before, I'll deal with this slide momentarily, but one needs to go into this clear eye. We're talking about a pest which is attacking one of the foundational trees in the province. There are probably more than 200,000 hectares. Does everybody, is everybody conversant in hectare or would you prefer acres? Make that about almost a half a million acres if you're, if you're living in acres. Of forest that's dominated by hemlock trees. We don't pretend to be able to treat all of those trees. But we can treat some. A very wise biologist and conservationist nearly 100 years ago, Aldo Leopold, in his famous book Sand County Almanac, said something I'll never forget, which is, "The first art of intelligent tinkering is to save all the parts." And I'm hoping that at least we can accomplish that in the province of Nova Scotia. We will not be able to treat all the trees, but we can treat some. Last year in the gorge, we estimate there are about, we treated about 1,200 trees in 20, roughly 20 hectares, 50 acres roughly. There are probably 2,000 trees that in, in total that we can treat that are large enough that you can't treat very small ones. So we'll finish those this year. But that's 2,000 trees in 20 hectares. In the ravine, it's about 50 hectares, the Kentville Ravine, which lies in part in the town of Kentville, in part in the, in the village of New Minus, half and half. So do the math at 100 trees per hectare. I was trying to, and, and I'm sure that you have some questions about the cost of doing this, and I'll, I can get into those during the question period if you will. Needless to say, the, the possibility of treating all of the trees in Nova Scotia is zero. But, but we can treat some. So we, we bring this to you today because of the larger issue of invasive species and recognizing that the scale of this problem is so large that it cannot be dealt with in a piecemeal fashion, and it can't be dealt with one individual, one individual group, or in one individual place. It needs to be done in, in collaboration between a variety of levels of government, NGOs, and private citizens. Everybody has a role. And one of the things that we would like to leave you with is the thought that you might consider creating in your budget, and we made this argument to the village of New Minus, we've made it to the town of Kentville, but the argument that you create in your budget align for invasive species management, treatment, remediation. These things are going to be with us for the foreseeable future. And HWA is only one of several. You have some additional information in your package on a couple of others that are looming. It's safe to say that half of our foundational tree species in Nova Scotia are likely to disappear within the next 100 years if we don't do something. And even if we do do something, most of them will disappear. I'm talking hemlock, white ash, American beech, we've already lost American elm. So there's four foundational species right there. All right. So I think the, what's our next line there? Yeah, we're, we're going to treat, I've already spoken to this, we've done some initial treatment in the, in the gorge park, we hope to finish that this year. We hope to start treating trees in the Kentville Ravine, that's the ravine on Eldrick and Brook adjacent to the research station. And we hope to start treating those trees later this spring. And we, that will probably be a three-year project. That's a more complicated endeavor because it falls in, half in the town of Kentville, half in the village of New Minus, and it's all owned by Agriculture Canada. Well, it's, that's not true. There are a series of privately owned adjacent lots in the ravine which are dominated by hemlock. They are all owned by private individuals and they fall within the village, but within the village of New Minus. Yeah, so the worst case scenario is that if we do nothing, we lose all the hemlocks. Now, in losing Eldrick and Brook, for those of you who know the ravine, you can imagine Eldrick and Brook without hemlocks. Imagine the gray ghosts that you saw in that second slide. Imagine the stream temperatures spiking because of the lack of shade that those hemlocks provide. So forget brook trout, forget salmon, that is a salmon stream, Eldrick and Brook, a lot of effort and energy has gone in to try to restore salmon in that watershed. There will be no brook trout, there will be no salmon. There are a number of insect-feeding birds which will no longer be there. So, and of course, when those gray ghosts arrive, the fire hazard spikes, so we have yet an additional issue with, with fire control. Yeah, so we like to think that our grandchildren should be able to walk on this trail and experience the magic of hemlocks in the summer, in the cool summer days, and in the winter, when that dusting of snow falling on hemlocks is quite a magical experience. So I'll stop there. I suspect there'll be some questions around costs and I'm happy to get into some ballparking around that. Take any questions. Thank you.
It should lighten up like a Christmas tree here, Dr. Herman. Okay, I find the one that's flashing, okay. Counselor Lutz.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. Thank you so much for your presentation. This is something we have heard about occasionally, but I think this is the most in-depth we've, we've dug into the issue, particularly what the municipality can potentially do to be part of a solution. My question is, when a tree is treated, how long does that treatment last?
Great question. We don't know. No, that's, that's, I'm sorry, that's a, that's a generalization. We, we have a, we have a fairly good idea. It depends on the treatment approach, and I'll get into those two treatment approaches. Four to six, five to seven years is the hope. Now, I, there's a caveat to this, and that of course is, your first thought is, my God, we have to do this again after five years? We take the approach of, we're looking at this challenge at three temporal scales in three ways. One is the immediate control, which at present is chemical. But chemical treatment is only one approach. There are also biological control approaches where we use natural predatory insects to control the populations of the HWA below thresholds that will kill the trees. And of course, the third timeframe is to look at breeding treatment, or breeding HWA-resistant hemlocks. Identifying hemlocks out there where there may be trees that are resistant and then finding those trees, breeding them, et cetera. The three time scales for those are, the chemical control is immediate, that is our only solution until we can introduce biological control. The timeframe for that is 10 to 20 years. That work has already begun at Acadia, Kirk Hillier, at Acadia University is just finishing, putting the finishing touches on a breeding facility for Larocubius beetles, which is one of the major predators. And they'll, they've already done some predator releases in Nova Scotia at Kegy and a couple of other locations. But that's a 10 to 20-year timeframe out. And then breeding resistant hemlocks. They're just starting to get a handle on the chest, the American chestnut. Now breeding resistant chestnuts and the chestnut blight I'm looking over at my expert behind me, I believe was around 1921. So figure 100 years for resistant, breeding resistant stock. So what we immediately need to do is treat chemically, but we probably won't be looking at more than two or three cycles of that chemical treatment. You have to appreciate, back to my earlier point that I started this, my comments with about this unprecedented place we find ourselves in. Some of you I know from past interactions, and some of you may know me, but you probably would not have envisioned seeing me walking through the Kentville Gorge with 50 pounds of pesticide on my back spraying trees. I do have a reputation in some circles for being somewhat opposed to that kind of behavior. But the rules have fundamentally changed, and to my point, we have changed the planet in such a way that, we've changed our behavior. Some of us who were adamantly opposed to using chemicals widely are now seeing that there may, in the short term, be no alternative. So there were two, I'm sorry, it's a very long answer to a short question. But there are two treatment approaches. One is by injecting the trees. That is a very effective way because there's no spillage, no contamination around the tree at all. It goes into the vascular system of the tree, it takes a while to get to the top, to the crown, but, but it does. And that lasts probably four to six years. It's very expensive, but very effective, and we have to use that anywhere near a water course. So within seven meters of water, we only inject trees. And it, that's more expensive, the chemical is more expensive, but, but when we're near water to avoid any contamination of waterways. All the other trees we treat with basil bark spray, you go around, walk around the tree with a sprayer, it's directed, the sprayer's directed, so you, you, there's very little spillage, but there is some contamination. There's a lot of work being done on what those effects are right now as we speak to make sure they're minimized. That lasts ironically, even though it's externally sprayed, that lasts longer than the injectable. But the difference in cost is, is quite significant, the, the cost of the two approaches. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Thank you for your informative presentation. The two infestations that I remember most would be spruce budworm and Dutch elm disease. And I'm kind of curious as to how this compares to that. And my second question for you is, I'm hearing a lot about important local response. I'm wondering what the response is provincially from the provincial government to this. Thank you.
Great questions. The spruce budworm is, is a native infestation, but it's an eruptive pest that goes through cycles. cycles. And spruce has evolved with spruce budworm, and although the, I think the major problems without going down that rabbit hole too far at spruce budworm, the major challenges of spruce budworm is that, that they don't respect foresters. But, but we live with spruce budworm because we have evolved, there, it's a, it's an internal, you know, it's a, it's a native species, and, but it is one which goes through eruptive phases. There are many of such things. We see eruptions in populations of all sorts of organisms, pests and otherwise, be they snowshoe hares, or spruce budworm, or crossbills if you're a burger, and so on. But Dutch elm is probably a better one in, in the sense that Dutch elm is an invasive species, a little more complicated in its, in the damage that it causes. Ken has a lot of experience with, with Dutch elm. There are very few resistant, but there are some resistant elms out there, but relatively few. I would say that the disturbing thing about HWA is that there appears to be, once infected, the likelihood of dying is greater, probably greater than 99%. So it's pretty bleak. Now, your question about provincial involvement, the province is involved in several ways. This act, this group that I alluded to earlier, the HWA Regional Working Group, which meets monthly, we're, we're on a call every month. There are between 30 and 40 people every month. There are a lot of people working on this, and, and it's a very interesting dynamic. The call lasts about an hour and a half every month. The province is heavily involved in that enterprise. It is also, has a strike team. The province has a strike team. It has a significant amount of federal funding that it's received to treat trees. But the province has probably only treated about 1,000 hectares of trees to date. We have, you know, if, as I, you know, my estimates, this back of the envelope calculations of about 200,000, more than 200,000 hectares, we've treated 1,000 of 200,000, so half of 1%, right? Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Gates.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding is permethrin is not effective on this one, but it is on the balsam woolly adalgae. When you do your injections, is there a timing for injecting? Is it an imidam pellet that you?
It's, the product that we've been using is Imager, is the name of the project, product. It's a neomatoclopid, if you know your chemicals at all. And it's, to give you a sense of what it, I was trying to do this on, you know, sort of back of the envelope last night. We use about 2.8 liters per 100 meters of stream, if you're treating all the trees within seven meters of either side of, all the hemlocks within seven meters of either side of the stream. It costs about $800 per 100 meters of stream to treat the hemlocks within that 14-meter-wide The, so that's the, that's the stem injection. The basal bark spray, and that, that stem, that, that chemical's almost $300 a liter for the stem injection. The basal bark spray is about $100 a liter. So it's a threefold difference. There's a lot of advantage to using the stem injection because of the reducing contamination, but it's three times as expensive. But there are limits to how much you can apply to the basal, of the basal bark spray. So there are, there, we have to measure when we treat an area, the first thing we do is we, we sample all the, we map all the trees in the area, measure all the trees, all the hemlocks, and measure their diameter, DBH, and there's a limit to how much you can treat per hectare in a given year, amount, a limit to the amount of chemical. That's why it takes more than one year. You can't spray all the trees in one year. It might take two in the case of the Kentville Gorge, or in some cases, three, if there are very dense stands of hemlock, because we can't spray them all in one year. But, but those are the two main approaches, the basal bark spray, which is a product called Zitec that we're using at present. Both of these chemicals are very effective if they are applied early. If they are not applied until the trees are heavily infected, then their efficacy drops dramatically, and we have to go to more expensive chemicals which have other issues associated with them, which are probably more, more damaging.
That kind of leads into the other question, is there a timing that's best for the injection?
Yeah, so the best time to treat the trees is starting now until late May. That is the best time, but any time of the year works. We, we don't know, we don't have a controlled experiment to know just how, if they are less effective, if we treat trees in the fall, whether that's less effective. Ultimately, the product gets through the vascular system to the crown, but we want to get it to the crown as quickly as possible because that's where all the feeding action is. That's what the adalgae's like. They like those lovely new leaves in the tops of the crowns of the trees.
The, the main reason for that is we're in, we're in a spring period right now, so there's very active water flow within the tree. A, you see seasonal variations in, in this as well. If we get into a drought period, then uptake either, both from trunk injection and basal spray is less, so you have, be a little, little bit aware of, of weather conditions as well, but spring tends to be the best time for uptake.
Counselor Allen. Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor, through you, to the presenter. My question's a bit different. I'm just wondering about wildlife in the area. When you do a trunk injection of a woodpecker, come along, would that kill the woodpecker?
That's a good question, and no. The, the, this is a product that is, neomatoclopid is specific to insects. It will kill other insects on the tree if they are feeding on, on the sap or, or feeding on leaves on the tree, but it won't, will not kill woodpeckers. This is a concern, obviously, about contaminants, or what about feeding on insects which might have ingested some chemical? Most of the insects that are affected are very small and are not being ingested by insectivorous birds. The main risk to bird life is the loss of habitat. So there are warbler, several warbler species which are characteristic of hemlock forests. When we lose the hemlocks, we lose the warblers. They have no habitat, so, but, but not because of ingesting insects, but rather because they've lost their habitat, so. But it's, this is an area that Kirk Hillier at Acadia's, and he's got a host of, he's got six new graduate students this year, most of whom are looking at the indirect impacts of treatments. They're looking at the impacts on soil fauna, on amphibians, on, on birds, on, on, yeah, microclimate, the impacts of, of losing hemlock, they're looking at the impacts on microclimate and so on, so. A lot of work being done on this.
Thank you.
Counselor Gates.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding is ladybugs are very effective in attacking the woolly adalgae. Is that correct?
That's a good question. There's no evidence that they have had any impact here on, on HWA. There are, there are, there's a fly and a beetle, and the beetle is being bred as we speak. It's called, they call them little Larrys, that genus name is Laracobius, but they're known in the business as little Larrys. Little Larrys are specialists on HWA. That's how they make their living, that's what they eat entirely. They are much more effective. Ladybird beetles are, tend to be more generalist predators. They, they certainly eat aphids, but they, to my knowledge, there's no evidence that they've been effective tackling HWA here. Mind you, we do have a problem with some ladybird beetles because there's, well, some of you may know, we have an invasive ladybird beetle which is excluding and reducing the populations of our native species because we have introduced an, again, another Asian insect that has found its way here, so, yeah.
Just, just quickly on the biocontrol side, so the two beetles that Tom mentioned, the two species of Laracobius plus the silverflies are actually, are actually native to British Columbia. And British Columbia has, has HWA, and they've had HWA for a long time, and it's not a problem out there. So on western hemlock, it, apparently there, there is no problem. That's largely due to that predator-prey balance. We don't have Laracobius beetle here, but the fact that it is present within the country makes it easier for us to, or for people like Rick Hillier, who's working, doing some great work on this, to actually bring them in. Permitting is, is much more straightforward. CFIA tend to be a lot more sanguine about having predators moved within the country than they would be bringing in. We all know the, the disasters which have happened, importing a predator to try to deal with, with a pest problem from, from elsewhere. But on the surface of it, the, the biocontrol options are a little easier to handle, and that's why the work is, is underway. So really what, where I see biocontrol going, and Tom's outlined it extremely well, it's a long, it's a long-term venture, but what we're, what we're attempting to do with the chemical treatments is basically to create refuges throughout the province so that we don't lose the, the entire population of hemlocks throughout Nova Scotia. That's all we can do. Clearly, we can't possibly treat all the trees in, in the province, and neither are we, we trying to do that. Plus the fact that when silverfly and, and beetles are, are introduced, there's got to be that balance. There has, there has to be food for them to, to establish and, and to survive. So this is, this is a, it's a long-term and an integrated approach that we're, that we're really pursuing here. Like Tom, I haven't heard of any, any direct control via ladybugs, but yeah, I, I, you know, as far, as far as I know, the, the biocontrol is focused on, on basically two species, species of beetles and a, a fly.
And there's no record of, further south where the HW is well-established that ladybird beetles have been effective at all in containing, but they do use the Laracobius beetles.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you for the very informative presentation on behalf of Kings County Council and, and staff and the residents of Kings County. I want to thank you, Dr. Herman and Dr. Hickleton, and you, Mr. Harrison, for your outstanding service to, and knowledge to try and save the trees and save our planet. I know back in the day, even when I was Mayor of Kentville, I can remember you gentlemen were there doing the great work then, and it's wonderful to see that you're doing now, and it's really outstanding volunteer service that, that you're doing that is well beyond what most of us would be capable of, and having your expertise certainly is, is a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. And just remember, we're always looking for volunteers because the real cost of tackling this problem is the cost of labor. So sweat equity is worth a lot here. In fact, we would never be able to do this if you had to pay people to treat these trees, so.
Well said.
There are lots of opportunities. Just go to ns hemlock.ca, you can sign up. We'll be looking for volunteers this summer in the ravine, so keep an eye out. Thanks.
Okay, thank you again, gentlemen. Okay, can we have a motion to receive? Deputy Mayor Peckford, second by Counselor Hiltz. All those in favor or against, please vote. Okay, motion carried. Thank you. Now, next on the agendas, our adminis, oh no, you, you gentlemen don't have to leave too. What?
Nothing personal.
Oh, okay, we get it. We're getting used to it. All right, Administration and for amendments to policy FIN-05002, council and committee remuneration, and Vicky Brook, a policy analyst, presenting two recommendations. Good morning, Vicky.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Vicky Brook, and I'm the municipality's policy analyst. Before I begin, I would like to acknowledge that although I am the one presenting today, I had considerable help getting here, so I'd like to thank Lindsay Halliday for her research work, as well as Terry Brown and Loriann Clark for their help. So I am here to present proposed amendments to policy FIN-05002, which is the council and committee remuneration policy. And this policy provides for remuneration and reimbursement of expenses to members of council, as well as council appointees or appointees to committees. Today's staff will be recommending to make two amendments to the policy. The first is to make limited amendments to the policy related to which committee appointees receive remuneration and are eligible for reimbursement of expenses. And the second is to provide retroactive remuneration to, an appointee to the police advisory board. The policy was most recently amended in July of 2024, at which time the remuneration rates for members of council were changed, and this came into effect following the October election. Since that time, staff have become aware of a discrepancy or an oversight in the policy that requires further amendment. So in its current form, the policy does not provide remuneration for ministerial appointees to the police advisory board, nor the Nova Scotia Federation of Agriculture's appointee to the Fences Arbitration Committee. As you'll see in the recommendations, it's because of the policy's failure to do this, especially to provide remuneration for the police advisory board member, that we're recommending the policy be amended. At this time, it's only the ministerial appointee to the police advisory that has not been receiving remuneration since their appointment in 2022. The Fences Arbitration Committee has not met in at least the last decade, so that appointee has not missed out on any remuneration. And it is staff's position that this change would be consistent with the intent of the policy, to provide fair remuneration for the work of appointed citizens. Both of these committees are requirements of the municipality, and the appointees are made by the province or the Nova Scotia Federation of Agriculture. Usually, in most cases, when an appointee is made from an external organization, that organization provides further remuneration. That is not the case with these two committees. So we always like to look for enabling authority, which we can find in the Police Act and the Fences and Detention of Stray Livestock Acts, which allow for the municipality to pay citizen So the amendments we're proposing today are because of discrepancies in the policy. First, we're recommending that the policy allow for remuneration and reimbursement of expenses for the appointees of the two committees. And of course, in an opportune moment where the policy is open, we would like to make two other housekeeping changes. First is to remove reference to the Kings Regional Rehabilitation Center, and that's following divestment that happened, I think, in late 2024, early 2025. So it's no, no longer relevant, and it's prudent to remove it. And secondly, it's, we're recommending that council's remuneration in section 3.3 be adjusted to reflect inflationary adjustments that were made on April 1st. So I won't be giving you a raise. These are adjustments that were called for in section 3.6 of the policy to adjust council's remuneration year-over-year for CPI. remuneration year-over-year for CPI. So there's two recommendations. First is to amend the policy. Second is to provide retroactive remuneration. And I'm happy to take any questions of the committee.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions to Vicky on her presentation? No? Okay, I guess the only comment that I would make, or question, would be, I think it's your estimation that you're being fair to these people that are, want, that are serving on the police commission because they otherwise would not get a remuneration, and other members would. However, would you have the opinion that it really should have been the province of Nova Scotia who appointed those people, should be paying their remuneration?
To you, Mr. Mayor, so I would firstly say that it is, in staff's opinion, consistent with the intent of the policy. So the intent is, if a citizen is serving on a committee of our council, that our council should be paying them. In this case, appointees come through what the province calls their ABC, their Agency Board and Commission Appointment Process. And I would say that these two committees are kind of different from many of the committees listed on the province's ABC list, in that they are requirements of the municipality. So other committees on the ABC registry or list are generally committees of the province. So in those cases, I see why the province would be paying them, but I also understand the logic that if it is a requirement of the municipality to have these committees, and we fully oversee the committees, that we should be reimbursing and remunerating the appointees.
Good answer. I think you'll make a great politician someday, Vicky.
No, thank you.
Councillor Best.
Thank you, Mayor. Through to presenter. I thought the police advisory board was set up through the province of Nova Scotia, mandatory to have it. Is that correct?
Through the mayor to you, Councillor Best. My understanding is that it is a requirement of the municipality, but I will reserve comment or deflect comment to either Mr. Brown or Mr. Conrod for the statutory requirements for the police advisory board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, my understanding is that it's a statutory requirement that you have one, but it's a statutory requirement, as Ms. Brooks did, for the municipality to create one.
I never knew that. All the years I was on that, I thought the province made us do it. Thank you.
You're learning new stuff all the time.
I'm done, yeah.
So why are they, I'm going to just follow up after them.
Why are they telling who put on this committee? We have a, we have one person that's on that committee that the province selects.
Okay, you got your question? CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there's a, the Provincial Police Act requires that we have a police board, and that they require that we have provincial appointments on that board. So I hope that clarifies what I'm trying to say. We're required to have the board, but they get to make appointments.
Okay, so we, our first recommendation, do we have a mover of that recommendation, please? Moved by Councillor Allen, second by Councillor Sappington. All those in favor or against, please vote.
Yay.
Okay, motion carried. Councillor Best, what are you?
Voting yes.
So we'll record it, Councillor Best is voting yes, please. Okay, motion carried. And then on the second recommendation, do we have a mover? Moved by Councillor Lutz, second by Councillor Gates. All those in favor or against, please vote.
Yay.
Motion carried. All right, thank you very much, Vicky. And we'll move on to engineering and public works, and at this time, we'll call our Director Brad Carrigan for the 2025-26 J-Class Road Agreement. Brad, this is gonna, this is gonna be a little bit, isn't it? A little while, take a, it's gonna take a bit. I'm thinking about calling a recess every five. It's gonna be--
Through you, Mayor, no. It's gonna be very quick.
Very quick?
And you can--
All right.
Recession right after me if you wish, or you could, it's your, it's your show.
Thanks for your permission.
It's your show. You can do what you want.
No, I got your permission. I know how to go.
All right, now I have something to live up to here.
You do.
I will do my best to get through this as fast as possible, so that we can have a break. I'm here today to discuss the J-Class Roads, Provincial J-Class Roads Program approval. There's two recommendations to follow at the end of this presentation. One is acceptance or recognition that we did have a J-Class Road approved by the province. And second recommendations for consideration of request of the province. So just to give everybody a background, I know we did the, you've got, council's done a ton of, I'll say, awareness sessions for different programs. We did go through the J-Class program before, but I will recap it again for everybody, because I know there was a ton of, a ton of educational material that has been provided to council. So with the current program, we can annually submit municipal recommendation of up to 10 roads by priority to the province for consideration on a cost-share agreement. The roads that can be submitted are only roads that are on the 1995 J-Class list that was submitted in, in 1995, when all future roads after 1995, all subdivision roads became, province wasn't taking on any new roads. All of those roads were the responsible, responsibility of the municipality. As per the agreement, the surfaces must be gravel, chip seal, or sand seal, so previous paved roads are not eligible, and the program is intended to bring those roads up to a paved standard whenever possible. As I said, it's a 50% cost-share agreement with the province, so the municipality pays 50%, province pays 50%. And just of note, the current program that's in place is a $1 million program to cover all municipalities throughout the province. So $1 million doesn't get you very far. Staff reviewed, so what we've done to date, and this all happened last summer, staff reviewed and audited our 2023 data, which was the last time a consultant did the work. So they confirmed the condition ratings, they went out and confirmed the road surface types, they confirmed the financial, environmental, and social-cultural scoring that we present, which is our FESC. And staff performed annual field assessment of conditions to make sure that they were up to date. As we noted, previously paved roads are not eligible for the cost-share program, and back in September, Manager Pearson was actually up here and submitted a priority list of 10 roads to the province for consideration. That was back in September of 2024. So this is what the list looked like that was submitted. As you can see, Sandy Court, in particular, was the, the top prioritized road that was submitted on the list, already in a poor-three condition, which is our worst condition, with an FESC score of 60, meaning it ranks pretty high on our, our list of financial and social conditions. The reason I highlight Sandy Court is, if you've read your packages, I'm sure you did, that Sandy Court was the only road that was approved. So if this catches up, you'll get to see the second slide. So there's the other five that were submitted on the list for our 2025 paving program. So total road list as submitted was 1.9 kilometers, average FESC score of 59 out of a possible 150. 50% of the roads have a poor-three condition rating. As I mentioned, the, we received letter and notification from the province that only one road was approved for 2025, which was Sandy Court in Aylesford. It is a total of 250 meters in length. It is currently chip seal condition. There's a picture on the screen there, if people can see that. So that will go to a paved condition. Like I said, currently, it is in a poor-three condition with an FESC score of 60. The province has projected the cost to repave that section of chip seal road is $180,000. And so the 50% cost share for the municipality of Kings would be $90,000. So, brings us to a alternative program. So just recapping, 1995 J-Class Roads listed in Kings County is a little more than 135 kilometers of roads, consisted of 393 roads throughout the county. The King's budget approval in the budget was 400, over $460,000. I'll say the good news, if it's good news, is you only have to spend $90,000 of that, that's what's projected, and that provincial budget program for this program equals $1 million for the entire province. So very clear that present-day program is not keeping pace with the poor conditions of the, the roads through the county, and this is not, not just Kings County problem, this is a problem throughout the province. So in November of '24, a presentation was made to council. It consisted of converting the annual program or a proposal to convert the annual program to a multi-year program. The province would enable multi-year funding commitment. Municipalities, in particular Kings, would borrow the funds to repave the prioritized roads upfront without having to wait for the program to, to be on a year-by-year basis. The annual principal and interest payments would be funded by that 50-50 provincial and municipal sources, and the term of the load, which should be term of the loan, would match the term of the agreement of the new program. So if it was a 10-year program, then that would be the term of the loan. If it was a 15-year program, then that would be the term of the loan. So I have here two recommendations, but before that, if there's any questions, I'd be pleased to try and answer--
Any questions to Director Carrigan? Councillor Lutz.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you. Has there been any discussion about where the remainder of that $460,000 gets allocated if, when such few, so many few roads? Maybe I'm not understanding correctly, but, so I'll ask if I'm understanding this correctly. So we budgeted that $460,000 in that operating budget is for J-Class road repaving. So if we're only approved for 90, or, you know, 180, but our $50 share is 90, what does the bulk of that, the remainder of that budget, where does it go?
Thank you. Through the Chair, instead of me trying to guess at this, I'm going to look over at our Acting Director, Mr. McKay, and see if he can, I, I want to say reserve, but I don't want to be wrong either.
I believe you are right, but I would have to double-check on that.
And that leads me to a second question. So if we have $460,000 in the budget for this program, and we're only allocating 90, I understand we have a reserve allocation policy that any additional funds would go to. Is there, you know, I think we hear a lot about roads, and is there consequences if we take that, you know, surplus or additional money and, and simply pave the next road on the list at 100%? I have a feeling that that's, that Mr. Conrod has opinions on that. But it seems a real shame that we budget $460,000 and, you know, for this project, and because of the province's inability or unwillingness to contribute more to that 50-cent bucket, our residents are the ones who suffer with bad roads. So I don't know if that is a direction we have considered taking or not, but I do feel at the end of the day, while it isn't our responsibility to fund these roads 100%, we do have residents driving on really bad roads every day, and I do feel for those people. One road at a time, we know this is not gonna cut it, so I'm assuming we're not going in that direction, but I guess that's my question.
Councillor Best.
Well, I like to, you know, you got $390,000 set aside for J-Class roads. I don't feel that we should be waiting for the province. They only put a million dollars in for the whole province of Nova Scotia. It's not much money for paving. I like to see that $390,000 left over to do two or three more roads that really need it. I don't know about other councillors, but I know myself, 90% of my phone calls is roads. I don't know about everybody else, but 90% is roads. Thank you.
Just make a quick comment, so that previously, we had a meeting with the three MLAs, Minister Lor, Minister, or MLA Julie Van Axum, and MLA Chris Palmer here about the presentation that the director is, is involved, looking at trying to do all the roads at the 50% and borrow money. And since that meeting, the CAO and I have been meeting individually with those MLAs promoting that. So I'm, I'm just saying, we're, we're trying to make sure, obviously, it's, you know, if we can get 50 cent dollars and do all the roads, would be a lot better than setting a precedent, maybe. And I'm just, just saying that right now, because so far during those meetings, all of them, we haven't met again with Minister Lor, seemed very receptive. I'm just throwing that out. Okay, CAO Conrod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To attempt to answer both of those questions, so to the best of my knowledge, right now, that money that's remaining would fall to surplus and would go to our surplus allocation policy, which is basically the next year lowers the amount of debt that we would incur. It would, that would be the first use of that. At a staff level, we've been talking about coming back to council or coming to council with the, with the suggestion of a, of a special restricted reserve, that it wouldn't fall to surplus if, assuming there's a surplus that year, that would be set aside in a road, in a road reserve that is in anticipation of the province coming up with a new program. So that's my attempt at the first question. The second question or suggestion is about using that to pave provincial roads. I think there's probably at least two potential answers to that. Number one is, I think we need to remember that they are provincial roads, so, you know, there's procurement, there's standards, there's all those practical things, because the provincial roads, that, you know, that's, that's funneled through a provincial procurement process that's guided by provincial standards. The second element, I would say, is that these J-Class roads are only a subset of the local roads in this county, in our municipality, and the province. And they are provincially owned, so I would think that negotiating 101 would come into play, that if we start taking over something, that it's a provincial jurisdiction, that the province should be relieving some of the cost of things that we're paying for through the property tax dollar. That's more of an opinion, I guess, than--
Thank you. And Deputy Mayor Peckford.
Thank you, through you. I guess my question was just answered, but I'd like to reiterate, I guess, what you had mentioned, you know, it's, it's a dangerous precedent to be set if we start paving these J-Class roads, so I'm glad to hear that you're having these discussions with the local MLAs.
Yeah, well, we, we had the group meeting, and now we're trying to pick them off one at a time. Through Councillor McPherson, one more, Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, first of all, thank you, CAO Conrod, for that explanation, and I appreciate the fact that the mayor and the CEO are negotiating. I think Councillor Best is absolutely right. The number-one issue or concern of constituents tends to be, at this point, roads, and rightfully so. And there are no easy answers. And I think the danger here is the fact that we do not want to take on responsibility and expenses that do not belong to us. At the same time, we need to be doing something. And the CEO just made a comment about reserve funds and the potential for a new arrangement, and who knows if that will come to reality or what that-- And who knows if that will come to reality or what that means, but there needs to be something different. Personally, I'm repairing my little car several times a year because of potholes that I'm unable to avoid, and that's what my constituents are telling me. Our conversations are about municipal roads and J-Class roads, which are minimal in the grand scheme of things. We don't have the control, the province has the control, but we have to respond to our constituents, and something has to change. And I want to thank both of you for trying, I know you're trying. And I know our Mayor was put in a very unfavorable position recently on a local radio show, where he was asked to answer for the state of roads in Kings County. And what answer can you give? It's not us? That is the answer, but that's not what constituents want to hear. They want a solution. Thank you.
Well, I guess the other scary part is, we got 835 of those, could be downloaded on us, so we've got to be real careful. Anyway, Director, I think you had another comment.
Yes, I did, through you, Mayor. Just something to keep in mind, and I've definitely heard, understand, very sympathetic to the issue that's here, and again, I use, echo the caution of the CAO with the same thing, of it's a very slippery slope to start going down, taking, I'll say, taking responsibility, stepping up to do provincial roads. And the reason I wanted to add this is, there is one road in particular that I've already received, one single cost estimate across my desk for, that is a municipal-owned road that is not budgeted for. We've got $200,000 in operating budget planned to repave our own roads, and to repair the section of road in front of the Home Depot, if anybody's there, that is a municipal-owned road. That is going to come in probably three times what we've allocated for operating budget this year. To fix that road, we could be looking at over, you know, $500,000, $600,000 without putting a number on it exactly, to the point where I will have to go out to public tender, you know, it's over our threshold with our municipal contractor to do the work. So that's obviously why I can't say what the price is right now, because I will have to go to public tender. But what I'm saying is, is that there are municipal roads that have need as well, and if there is a surplus, this is maybe the balancing act, that we have to take that surplus that we may have this year and spend it on municipal roads first. So just a consideration for council.
Thank you, Director. Okay, well, we do have a recommendation in front of us, and just before we call for the question on that, make no mistake, this $90,000 that's been approved is nothing but a joke, an embarrassment. There, I said it, feel better. Didn't help. Okay, so we need, looking for a mover, moved by Counselor Gates, second by Counselor McPherson. All those in favor or against, please vote on the first recommendation.
Yay.
Okay, motion carried, and now on the second recommendation, moved by Deputy Mayor Peckford, second by Counselor Lutz. All those in favor or against, please vote.
Yay.
Okay, motion carried, and I will now declare a 10-minute recess after that brief presentation from Director Carrigan. It's quite amazing, isn't it? The last meeting we had lasted for less than an hour, and then only one councillor wasn't here, and, oh, that was you, Counselor McPherson. Now we're two hours into it, and we're not even half done the first one. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order, and we're going to now deal with some information technology services, and our manager of IT, Chad West, will be presenting an award of a contract, number 25-09, permitting software. Mr. West.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have another award of a software contract today to bring to you. This one is for a cloud-hosted permitting system, and just a quick review of the requirements that we were looking for as part of this software system. So what we were looking for really was a system that was both applicant or resident-facing, as well as staff-facing, that would provide like an online portal where applicants could go and collect project requirements, kind of proactively, so that they wouldn't have to try to wade through the dense documents on the site, so some assistance with that phase of their projects. Online permit and license applications, so taking it from that information gathering phase in through to actually applying for the permit or the license that they're looking to get. Tracking communications between staff and applicants, it often happens if we have a question later on down the road about what's been said during an application process, then we have to go look through emails and that sort of thing, so the system would, you know, kind of consolidate all of that communication with an applicant directly within the software. And then on the back end, we're really just looking for end-to-end application tracking, so taking a permit application right from the initial phases all the way through to approval for someone to start building, and then the inspections, and then the final issuance of any of the associated permits. Also looking for some inspection tracking for our building inspectors or NRFP inspectors, and that includes the use of a mobile app for out in the field. And this system would replace our existing PERC system, which is only staff-facing, so this would add the resident-facing component, as well as replace the functions that are currently handled by PERCs on the back end. And this ultimately really is to meet our commitments that were made under Housing Accelerator Fund activities. In terms of this specific RFP, it was released February 13th of this year, and then closed March 27th. We received seven submissions, and they were scored on the requirements, how well they met the requirements that we had laid out in the NRFP, the usability of the software, and the profile of the company that was submitting the bid. And our top scoring proposal was from a company called Clarity Cloud for their Clarity launch program, and just a few highlights kind of of what stood out on that one. You can see a little bit of an image of it on the screen, it's a bit difficult to see, so I'll just explain a bit. So this program really does give us that online portal side of thing for residents, so they'll be able to go to our website, indicate the type of project that they're wanting to undertake, whether that be, you know, adding a fence, or adding an accessory dwelling unit, or building a whole multi-unit dwelling. So they sort of select what they were, project they're trying to do, work through the steps, answer a bunch of questions, and based on the location of the property, the zoning, the type of project that they're undertaking, it will give them a customized list for them of, here's every step that you need to take in the process to go from start to finish, here's all of the fees that would be associated with that, if there are any, and once they submit, then it will walk them through how to schedule an inspection, which inspections need to be scheduled when. So really just a guide for them to take them through the whole process, as well as at any point they can reach out and ask staff for assistance via the portal. And then on the back end, a full system for staff to be able to track all the activities that happen related to that, all the communications, and really what permits, it'd be like a system of record for issued permits and that sort of thing as well. So that was the top proposal, and what we'd be getting with that. In terms of, where's that, flip it in here? In terms of the financial implications for this contract, it is a five-year agreement with a non-recurring setup fee as well, so the first two years, and the setup fee would be charged to the Housing Accelerator Fund account itself. You can see the amounts on the screen there. And years three through to five would be our general software subscriptions account, and the total excluding HST for the five years would be $333,650. And with that, I have the recommendation on the screen, and happy to take any questions.
Okay, any questions to Manager West? Counselor Best.
It's a Canadian firm, I hope?
Yep, this is a Canadian company. They do have offices in the US, so they're headquartered in Vancouver.
But they do have offices in the States.
They do have offices, so there'd be some staff and some development activity in the States, but the company is a Canadian company.
Next question, please, Mr. Mayor. Was this the cheapest?
It was not the cheapest. It was within $20,000 or $30,000, I believe, of the lowest. I can't remember fully offhand. The cost was a factor in the scoring as well, so the total price, factoring in the score of the pricing, this was the highest scoring.
Thank you.
Counselor Gates.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Do we know if any other municipalities are using this particular program?
Yeah, so there was references provided as part of the proposal, and we did check those municipal websites to make sure, you know, how the system was working for them. In terms of, there's a few municipalities in the US that are using it. In terms of Nova Scotia, Colchester has already implemented, and I know that, I believe it's, Lunenburg County is currently implementing it, kind of at the same timeframe as us. I think they started their project maybe a couple weeks ago.
Okay, no one else? All right, does somebody like to move the recommendation move by Counselor McPherson, second by Counselor Sappington? All those in favor or against, please vote.
Aye.
I don't know what's going on. I'm pushing my button over here, but I did vote for, thank you, Chad. And who else? Okay, Tim, Tim, okay. All right, we'll move on to planning, stormwater management, and our manager Laura Mosher will be presenting. Good morning, Laura. Good morning Laura.
Good morning. We're hitting all the greatest hits of planning concerns today. First we did roads and now we'll do water. So the origin of this is at a planning staff level, we have seen a significant increase in concerns expressed by the public in how stormwater is managed on private property. Practically every public information meeting we hold as a planning group, as well as every appeal we have had at the Nova Scotia Regulatory and Review Board, formerly the Utility and Review Board, stormwater management comes up. And there is a bit of a misunderstanding on who is responsible for the management of stormwater on private property. So why are we seeing an increase in concerns? Well, we have seen an increase in development and especially higher-density developments, so development that occupies a greater percentage of a lot area. And we've also seen an increase in extreme weather events as a result of climate change. So the municipality is looking to provide guidance for property owners with regard to this issue, and it should be stated clearly that the responsibility for the management of stormwater on private property falls to the owner of that property. They are not, they are responsible for managing the stormwater such that it does not result in negative impacts on neighboring properties. But the municipality can play a role in assisting property owners in understanding their responsibility and providing guidance on how to manage that responsibility. And we can do that at the time of permitting by requiring that property owners consider how stormwater is going to be managed through the development and submission of a stormwater management plan. So we have identified certain developments for which this would apply and we've also identified some exemptions for which we would not have the same degree of concern. So we have drafted a policy, it was in your agenda package. I have a recommendation, but I'd be happy to take any questions in advance of someone moving that recommendation.
Okay, any questions to Laura on her presentation? Councillor MacPherson.
Thank you very much through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. I really appreciate the presentation. I think it's an important factor and you've given two reasons why. It tends to be coming up more and more. My question pertains specifically to developmental agreements and the fact that it is the municipality that goes into developmental agreements with contractors. And that may have an impact, the building may have an impact on surrounding properties. And I see clearly that you indicate that it is the homeowners or the private ownership responsibility. However, my question is, if the municipality chooses to go into a developmental agreement with a contractor providing permission for development, is there not a responsibility therefore on the municipality to ensure that the agreement as presented and accepted is followed through on?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor MacPherson. I cannot recall a development agreement that we've done since I've been here in a growth center certainly, that did not require the submission of a stormwater management plan, both during our process, but then again at the time of permitting, because as we all know developments can change over the course. So we do require that stormwater management plan be submitted for development agreements. Typically, if that's written into the agreement and we do require record drawings as proof in those instances that whatever infrastructure was proposed in that plan has indeed been installed. But at this time, we, I mean, prior to this policy, we did not have a way to request a stormwater management plan in the absence of a development agreement. So we're really, we are confident that we have it covered off in situations where there's a development agreement, but not all development occurs by development agreement. So we were looking to sort of close that loop on the, on other aspects of development.
Deputy Mayor Packford.
Thank you through you. Just in relation to stormwater, I know I've heard this come up a few times in development. Sometimes a vacant lot has become a de facto drainage area for neighboring parcels. And then when someone goes to develop it, they might be able to manage their own stormwater through retention, but the neighbors, because of the new developments, are no longer able to put their stormwater onto it. In a situation like that, what is the municipality's, I guess, guideline to remedy that situation where now the neighbors are no longer able to put their stormwater there? Do they have to enact a new retention management plan or is that something that is on the new developer? How does that work?
Where that's through you, Mr. Mayor, to Deputy Mayor Packford. Where that's an existing condition, that's not the municipality's jurisdiction to resolve that issue. Again, it is the property owner's responsibility to manage stormwater, so wherever that stormwater is coming from, it is the responsibility of those owners. And unfortunately, the person with the de facto, you know, retention pond, that's not, that's not something we would insert ourselves into in that process.
Yes, so they have no onus to continue to take on the neighbor's water?
Absolutely not, no.
Okay. I guess besides that, do you have a rough estimate on the cost it would add to new developments by having stamped engineer drawings for water retention? Just wondering what we're adding to the cost of housing here by having all of this added to development agreements and new development.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Deputy Mayor Packford. I believe Director Kerrigan probably has some information in that regard. However, I would just point out that if we don't add the cost at the front end, the cost could be borne significantly more at the, at the end, at the other end, right? Going to the expense of hiring legal counsel to take on civil action, Neighbors Against Neighbors could end up costing significantly more than the price of a stormwater management plan. But I will seek some guidance from Director Kerrigan in that regard.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, I am not able to assist with this. I haven't actually got a price for a stormwater management plan. I'm assuming that it's going to depend on how big it is and the amount of area and which contractor's going to do it, but I honestly don't have an order of magnitude that I could even, even hazard a guess.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Best.
Thank you. In case we don't have no idea, can we recess this and bring it to us next month with some more clarification information, please?
Are you talking the recommendation?
Well, I'm talking, talking about... Ellie there made a good point and I'd like to know exactly what it would cost before I'm gonna vote on how much more money it's gonna cost. Thank you.
Just a second to see what, Director Javert.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If it's at all helpful to council, if you take a look at the policy and you look at the proper, at the uses that are targeted by the policy for submission of drainage plans, most of those, if not all of those, types of developments are going to require similar professionals already being hired, typically engineers, surveyors. So it would be an added cost for sure, but we really tried to target projects that are already engaging professionals in a lot of those, yeah, in a lot of those projects. So it would add costs, but I don't think these developments are going to be out seeking engineers when they weren't already engaging engineers.
Thank you. Well, I'll go back to you councillor Best. If you want to put this off to next month, you would have to make a tabling motion and get a second or, and it would be duly voted.
Thank you. I'd like to table this if I can get a second for next month, please.
Okay, been moved by councillor Best to table this decision for until next month. Do we have a second or for that? Second by Deputy Mayor Packford, okay? So now we do have a motion on the floor to table this until next month. Is there any further discussion on, on that motion? Okay, so we're, we're basically, the recommendation that Laura's putting through, we're now voting on to table that for till, for one month till we get more information on the cost. Is that correct? Okay, so all those, so is some, are we, any further discussion? No? All those in favor of putting, tabling this till next month signify by saying, by voting in favor of that and those that are against signify by voting against. So we will now vote.
Yea.
Okay, one, okay, the tabling motion is, is passed, okay? So that is referred to our meeting next month. Thank you Laura. All right, we'll move on now on the agenda to board and committee reports. And we do have the Greenwood Water Protection Committee. This report was submitted by Deputy Mayor Packford. Do you have anything to add to that? No. Okay, is there any questions to Deputy Mayor Packford on that? No? Okay, then we'll move on to other committee reports. And is there any verbal committee reports from members of council? Okay, then we'll move on to external boards and committees. Is there any verbal committee reports on ex, any external boards and committees of council? Seeing none. I do have one, a quick one. I'll, was at the Valley REN board meeting yesterday along with our Deputy CAO, Rob Frost. And at that meeting of the board, Emily Boucher, our executive director, made an excellent presentation and talked about working with the other RENs. And they really haven't got a handle on exactly what these tariffs are gonna do, but probably not gonna be helpful in the long run to businesses, but it is certainly promoting more working together within the province and within the country. One of the highlights of the meeting was they, we approved three brand-new board meetings and I don't remember their names at this point in time, but I do remember their resumes and it was, appeared like outstanding individuals that will be a great asset to the Valley REN board. One of the disappointing things of the, was the announcement from the province that they are not going to approve any additional funding. And one of the things that the REN asked for was to maybe a two or a three-year funding formula, 'cause it's been going on a yearly basis. But the province has approved the same funding that they've been giving to the REN for the last 10 years. And obviously, it's, it's fallen behind the cost of doing business and that type of thing. It should be okay for the next year, but after that, it will probably become a concern. One of the motions that we had previously passed was for, with Annapolis considering joining, that it would not be any additional cost to the current members of the, of the Valley REN if they come on board. And we did get sort of an insurance from the provincial representative that in all likelihood, should Annapolis come on board, that the province would step up to the plate and, and support that, them as an addition. And that would be my report on, on that, with permission of council in case I missed something important. I don't know if the deputy mayor would, Deputy CAO has any additional comments? No? Okay, so that would be it for, for that. And I would ask for a, a motion from somebody to receive all those reports, please. Moved by Deputy Mayor, second by councillor Gates. All those in favor or against, please vote.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, thank you. Now we'll move on to correspondence. We, we have a letter from Birds Canada, sharing Bay of Fundy beaches with snow, shorebirds. And that is for information, okay? Unless there, anyone has any questions on it? We'll move on to, we had also a letter from Adrian Johnstone, Valley Eye Photography, about civic signs for committee of the hall. And so if somebody has any questions or comments on that, councillor Best.
Thank you, Mayor. Civic sign is a, to me is a major, major problem in Kings County. I talked to a couple of other fire departments and there's a lot of people that do not have civic signs up. Is there any chance, we got tax bills going out, any chance we can put a letter in the tax bill for everybody? Because even if we had one sign, saved lives would be very important.
So a question...
To the CEO.
Okay, is, are you prepared to answer that, Mr. CAO?
Mayor, I can't answer it off the seat of my pants, but I'll look into it.
Thank you.
Okay, so that could be a, a request to staff, then councillor Best to look into that? Okay, and Deputy Mayor Packford.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. Just to kind of go off councillor Best, as a first responder, I know how important civic signs are and every minute you're delayed looking for a house number is a minute that somebody could potentially die. I would like to ask that we look into potentially having a fund set up where citizens can come into the county and have their civic signs paid for. I know that they're quite inexpensive and I imagine even if we could get a few dozen or a hundred out there, it is certainly worth the money. You can't put a price tag on human life and I think that is something that we should look into.
So basically, I think you didn't, neither one of you have made a motion, but what will, take that as guidance that under the, that you're asking staff for direction, councillor Best and Deputy Mayor? And maybe staff can come back and give us a report on where we can go here, whether letters or signs or that your request is to pursue this further. Councillor Best.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a follow-up. When is a tax bill a quote?
No, we're asking the same thing at the same time.
Oh.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Tax bills actually were ordered this morning, approved this morning, so they are... so they are now gone to the printer.
Okay.
And again, it will, second bill goes out mid-August for the, for the final tax bill.
Well, that would be, that'd be all right if we can't get it out this, well, August be good for me, thank you.
All right, so I think we've thoroughly dealt with that, and we'll bring it back. Uh, that correspondence will come back, uh, to council, uh, at their next Committee of the Whole meeting in another month and, and with some recommendations from staff. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
All right, good. Other businesses, or any other business anyone wants to bring to council? Counselor Best?
Thank you, as you're well aware, District Six is hosting a big ham dinner supper. I have one, two, three, four, five counselors coming to it. If anybody's interested in tickets, it's a fundraising for the Cambridge Elementary Playground. Hundred percent of every ticket will be donated right to the playground. Hundred percent of the meal is paid for, so it's all profit. So anybody interested in tickets, let me know. I sold a couple tables and individual tickets, thank you.
You want to tell everybody how much they are?
Yes.
Thirty-five dollars a ticket. And you'll get entertained that night by Counselor Bob Best as an emcee. April the twenty-seventh at the Burrican District Lions Club. It's a ham dinner, baked potatoes, peas, carrots, and apple pie.
Okay, all right, um, we'll move on to, uh, comments from the public. I don't see any public here, so we'll, we'll move on, uh, to, uh... I would now declare the meeting adjourned. And we're gonna need a, a couple of minutes here, so, to change over. And, uh, I believe, uh, Haley and Yanni are gonna switch over, so just take a couple deep breaths. Okay? Which, which one is? Okay, well, that, and that's how it's listed anyway.
Is it?
I think so, isn't it? Yeah, see, it doesn't say that.
He doesn't know where Burri is, besides the hockey game.
We're not in the case.
Oh, you know what they told me, you know what they told me during the day? They told me he was gonna start skating next winter.
Well, I...
Show me up at the hockey game.
I, I...
Are you listening to this? You think that he could make a form here for Counselor Best?
I, I, I think that he did a great job. If he had had any support in his team, he would've won.
He's gonna skate twice a week before the hockey game. Twice a week he's gonna skate.
We're good? All right, we're, we're, uh, all right, we're ready to, uh, call the special council meeting to order here April the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at, uh, shortly after, about eleven twenty-seven. And, uh, I would declare that all council members are present, with, uh, Counselor Harding attending virtually. Uh, you're, you're with us still, Counselor Harding?
Yes, I am.
Perfect, thank you. All right, we'll move on to, uh, approval of the agenda. Uh, is there any additions anyone would like to make to the agenda? No, we'll move on then. Uh, could I get a motion to approve the agenda, please? Moved by Deputy Mayor Packford, seconded by Counselor Allen. All those in favor or against, please vote.
Yay.
All right, motion carried. Now, is, is there any member of council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any parts of the agenda that we're discussing? Counselor Hiltz?
Thanks, Mayor, through you. Um, so, number five, Financial Services Amendments to Policy F I N dash zero five, uh, dash zero two six, taxes exemption for nonprofit organizations. Um, I'm a employee of, uh, well, Kings Regional Rehab Center, so I'd like to...
Yes.
Um, step out for that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, no other conflicts of interest, then we will move on to recommendations to Committee of the Whole. Uh, the Amendment to Policy F I N dash zero five zero zero two, Council and Committee Remuneration. Uh, uh, and so we have a recommendation, a motion to give notice to adopt the amended policy. Uh, a motion to direct the CAO to renumerate the provincial appointee to the Police Advisory Board. Um, so do we have a mover, moved by Counselor Best, seconded by Counselor Lutz? All those in favor or against, please press your button.
Yay.
Okay, motion carried, and we'll move on to J-Class Roads Agreement. Uh, so, uh, we have a, uh, motion to accept the proposed road sandy court for repaving and a motion to authorize the CAO to propose a replacement J-Class program to the province. Uh, do we have a mover and a second? A move by Counselor Lutz, seconded by Counselor Sappington. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor or against, please vote.
Yay.
Pardon me? Yeah. So that was the first one on the, to accept the sandy court. Now, uh, we will also need a mover and a second on the, um, motion for the CAO to, uh, replace the J-Class Road program. Moved by Counselor Sappington, seconded by Counselor Best. All those, uh, in favor or against, please vote.
Yay.
Okay, motion carried. I may have, uh, we, we needed two on A two, didn't we not? Did I make a mistake there and, uh, only pass the first one? Mo- motion to adopt the amended policy, and then a motion to direct you on the Police Advisory Board. There should've been two motions on, uh, four A, is, is that correct, Yanni? So that means that we, we, we passed the first one to give the adoption amendment policy. I'd like to go back with permission of council, my air, apologize, to motion to, uh, on four A, motion to direct the CAO to renumerate the provincial appointee to the Police Advisory Board. Can we get a move by Counselor Gates, seconded by, uh, Counselor McPherson? All those in favor or against, please vote.
Yay.
That's the one, to be fair, that the province should be paying for. Motion carried. Okay, now, a motion to award, uh, contract number twenty-five dash zero nine, permitting software. So, uh, we have a mover and a second. Moved by Counselor Best, seconded by Counselor Lutz. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor or against, please vote.
Yay.
Okay, motion carried. And then on D, I guess we've, uh, tabled that to the next meeting. So, we'll move on now to Financial Services Amendment, uh, uh, F I N dash zero five dash zero zero three, fees adoption, adoption to amend the policy. Uh, and so we're looking for a motion to give seven days' notice, uh... Or we gave seven days' notice at the April second, I'm sorry. Motion to adopt the amended policy. Moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Sappington. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor or against, please vote.
Yay.
Okay, the next one is Amendment to Policy F I N dash, uh, a motion carried. Amendment to Policy F I N dash zero five zero two six, taxes exemption for nonprofit organizations. I note that Counselor Hiltz is, uh, uh, going to the gallery. And, uh, so we're looking for a motion to adopt and amend the policy. Moved by Counselor Gates, seconded by Counselor Best. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please vote.
Yay.
This is moving along pretty good. Is Counselor McPherson still here? Okay, five C, Revised Temporary Borrowing Resolution. Uh, we, Tyler Honeywood, Manager of Financial Service, presented, and we have, uh, uh, two motions. Uh, motion to rescind, uh, the April the second, uh, one, so, uh, are... Are we going right to that, or we need a present, where Tyler's doing the presentation? Okay. Guess we're back on board here.
Morning, council, I'm here today to discuss temporary borrowing resolution, uh, revised number. Um, and the origin of this was the April second, um, approval of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six budgets. The intent is for municipal council to rescind the April second, twenty-twenty-five motion, and approve the temporary borrowing resolution, um, the TBR. So just some discussion on this. Um, my RFD on April second, twenty-twenty-five, recommendation number eleven, contained outdated data. This is on me, in my air. Um, accuracy is critical, especially when we're using this information to guide decisions. Um, I'm adding an additional step in the review process to prevent this occurring in the future. Um, the appendix, uh, that was presented on the April second, um, was correct, but the, the numbers in the RFD were incorrect. Um, so the, the additional amount, or the, 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 the correct amount is, is twenty million, seven-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-and-twenty-seven dollars. Um, so that brings me to an additional item here in, in regards to the discussion. Per Burno's Rules of Order, Fourth Edition, Part Two, Section thirty-six, notice of intention to rescind the April second, twenty-twenty-five motion, was provided to council by email on April eleventh, twenty-twenty-five. The revised recommendation in this request for decision includes the correct amounts and does not change the approved capital budget or debt levels proposed within. The financial implications at this time are none. The temporary borrowing resolution is really a short-term borrowing measure for us to fund projects in a twelve-month period, and then upon completion of those projects, we, we send those to debentures for a more long-term financing solution. So I'll open the floor right now for any questions before I get into recommendations.
I'll do that for you. Any questions to Tyler on his, uh, recommendation? No, I, oh, we all, we're, so, all was one. Counselor Gates?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, and to you. I, I understand six million dollars additional, uh, might not have been included, but it does seem like a lot of money. Um, how are we going to pay for this? I mean, is, can we afford it? Um, when I look at that substantial amount of twenty million dollars, can we realistically, you know, absorb that amount?
Uh, through Mr. Mayor to Counselor Gates. Um, I think the big thing when we're talking about debt financing is where it allows us to spread out the cash outflow to match with the economic benefit that's provided to our citizens. Um, so we have to adhere to FCI, um, financial indicators. So with those indicators, um, in consideration, we're in a very strong position. And that would've been illustrated in the budget presentation in terms of how we're going to fund this through our general rate. And I think one thing to point you to there, uh, Counselor Gates, is our, our, our financial policy, F I N zero five one one four, which is our surplus allocation policy. So that states, um, that operating surplus funds, um, are allocated year-end to reduce long-term debt reliance. So even though you're seeing this number presented through a TBR, that necessarily won't come to actuality, if, and, and, and through the accountability reports that you will be seeing over the course of the fiscal year. If there is a surplus or something was to cost less, that's going to reduce this, uh, this outstanding debenture, um, that will, that will happen after the twelve, twelve-month period. Um, and I think if you look from a historical perspective, the amount of the TBRs isn't necessarily being fully debentured, and that's a result of, of, uh, headwinds when it comes to construction, um, constraints in that regard. Um, so to answer your question, uh, we're, we're in, we're in great financial shape. Um, we're using the debentures and debt to be able to spread those amounts out, so we don't have these large increases off tax rates, and really seem to be able to, to benefit our citizens to make sure that we're providing the infrastructure that's required.
And, uh, CAO?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to, uh, the counselor. If I'm, and I may not be understanding correctly, but if I'm understanding correctly, uh, your, your, your question, I just want to confirm that there's no additional debt. So the capital budget as approved, which had the debt ratios and whatnot in it, is a hundred percent correct. There's a typo in the motion, so this is correcting a typo in the motion.
Counselor Lutz?
Thank you, and just a further question of clarity. So when we met on March fifth of twenty, of this year, and we reviewed our capital budget, that all of those presentations we received on all of the capital projects we're doing ultimately end up in this twenty-million-dollar number? So we reviewed every single, basically minute detail of this entire capital budget at, on that day, and it was simply, uh, transferring error in terms of when you're putting some things into your PowerPoint, uh, for that RFD, am I correct?
Uh, through Mr. Mayor to Counselor Lutz, that, that is correct.
Thank you.
And I think that, that, all, all we're try, they're trying to do right now is fix a typo that, that we have already approved. Are you okay? All right. Okay, but the, the, it was previously already approved, it was just correcting a typo is what we're, they're doing, I think. Okay, all right, so we do have, uh, we're looking for a, uh, a motion to, uh, to rescind that. So, moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor McPherson. Any further discussion now that's on the floor? Okay, all right, all those in favor or against, please vote.
Yay.
In, okay, Counselor vote, uh, uh, Hiltz is voting in favor, uh, and Counselor Best, what are you doing? Okay, did you vote, you, you voted in favor? Oh. Oh, okay, well. I did, you're right. Holy lifting. That's the first mistake I've made in a long time. Motion carried. All right, Tyler, we're doing good. Now we got to the second one here. And so, that's right, yeah, we make sure we, we see if we can get this one through for you. So we have a mover for the approval of the provincial, provincial approval for the Temporary Borrowing Resolution. Moved by Counselor McPherson, seconded by Counselor Best. All those, any further discussion? No, all those in favor or against, please vote.
Yay.
All right, motion carried. Thank you very much, Tyler. All right, we'll move on now and looking for a motion to go into a closed session and for, I was gonna say for the audience, my understanding is that we will not be going back into regular council meeting. So I would, I would declare this meeting will be adjourned and ask for a motion to go into a closed session after, or adjournment afterwards. Moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Sappington. Okay, all those in favor or against, please vote to go into a closed session. And...
Yay.
Okay, so we're now into a closed session of council and the previous...